Plenipotentiary.
Plenipotentiary.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom and justice for all.
Comment? We have one. Kim Ladu.
I'll go to the podium.
Elko is in the podium, please. Thank you.
Well, thank you to the school committee members here tonight. Thank you for having opening comments from the public. I think one of the first things that I'd like to address, first of all, I'm Kim Ladu. I am a resident of Borica, lifelong resident. I've had students matriculate through Shashin Tech. I went to the high school, but fought hard for Borica High School, so I'm hoping to see Shashin Tech go through that same process successfully. I do want to address a couple of things. So first and foremost, this is the first time being in this room during this time, and it's a very interesting setup. I love the cushy chairs. It looks really comfortable. But I'm wondering if the public wouldn't be better served if you moved this meeting to somewhere that was more accessible to having more of a crowd. I noticed at the automotive school committee meeting, there was a lot of people that weren't able to look you in the eyes and to address their concerns or their comments. You have many other places in the school that you could be doing this. The library, the auditorium, the cafeteria. I understand that this is a great room, but I don't think it's really, you know, welcoming to the public to join in. You're kind of sitting in the background and you're looking into the back of people's heads. So been around the schools, so I know that there are lots of other great areas that you could potentially hold this meeting to really welcome. The second thing I wanted to talk about tonight is I've been in the community a long time. I know a lot of families, teachers, folks that are connected to the Shashin Tech community. And what I have seen as of late is a disappointing undercurrent of what almost feels like bullying. I've watched a number of the meetings. I've seen a number of areas in which I've seen the behavior of some folks on this committee to be not the professional expectation that I have as a community member and as a professional myself. So one of the things that I would like to put out to the school committee members is to maybe consider term limits here for the school committee. Now, I know that that's not an easy thing to do. It's not exactly an easy thing to address. You can't just wave a wand and say we should have term limits. But, you know, there's a couple of reasons for that. So first and foremost, I think new ideas, new blood, and folks that aren't part of the political system that is here is really important. This is something that the school committee could put forward. You could have all of the folks, all the towns and the regional towns be involved in voting whether they think term limits are something that might actually help continue moving this school and this district forward. So I would like to see the school committee address this and consider it and really think about what that might mean, what a term limit that makes sense. You wouldn't be the only school to have term limits. There are many schools that do it. But yes, you have to put it out to a vote to all of the participating regional district schools that are involved. And again, you know, I really feel that you do some things right in terms of changing who the head of the school committee is, the chairperson of the school committee. That's a great thing, changing it from year to year, town to town. But I do think that, you know, it would help with this undercurrent of politics that I seem to be identifying when I watch school committee meetings. And I think it's probably in the better, you know, better health for the whole community to have people that are really here to push along new ideas and to support new ideas in this community.
Can I interrupt for a minute? Because your three minutes are up, so I'll give you a little.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah. So I mean, those are the two things that I'd like to address. So first, love the room. I really think that you should move it so that more of the public can be better involved. I'm sure you can roll these seats into the auditorium or the library. And I do think, you know, I implore school committee members here to absolutely make sure that you are asking questions, asking for clarity, and ensuring that decisions that are made here are not made in a vacuum and are not politically natured. Okay? There's enough discussion on the outskirts of this school committee in the community of families and teachers and students where we've identified that this is an issue. So I'm asking that the school committee, please.
Thank you.
Do you represent a report?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I see some folks that I've never met before, so I just want to introduce myself. My name is Mackenzie Muller. I'm a junior here, and I'm in the metal fabrication program. And I just have a few bullet points that I wrote down like an hour ago that I thought about, that I thought that I should go over a little bit. So I just want to talk about our Shashin Turkey Bowl. We brought an exciting night of energy on Monday, the 17th, where the senior girls claimed a 34-28 victory. So I thought that was really awesome. And as well as the cheerleading captains and the football captains competing at the KISS 108 Annual Turkey Toss tomorrow morning. And the football team is once again heading back to Gillette Stadium for now our second time with the MIA Division V Super Bowl on Friday, December 5. And the kickoff will be taken up at 5:00 p.m., so I implore all of you to go take a look and watch. I know I will be. And over the weekend, this past weekend, our Skills USA leadership team took home eight silver and gold medals. And those will be coming back to our school for us to put on display. And I think that is so awesome that our teams get to go to conferences and bring things back to Shashin that we can put on display for everyone to see walking in the hallways. I don't know if you guys took a look at the bookcase that's right out there. We have a few medals from last year. And we're gonna also be hosting our second holiday party coming up on the 13th of December. And that is where our state officers from the leadership team are gonna come, help us raise the money, and we're gonna throw a holiday party for underprivileged homeless children between the ages of eight to 12 at the Boys and Girls Club to help them celebrate a holiday that they might not have at their homes. And then lastly, I just want to talk about our 70 seniors that earned our prestigious John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. That is a merit-based credit award going to Massachusetts seniors across the board. And the students have to score in the top 28% of their district. So I think that is really awesome for the seniors that are graduating next year, being able to get a scholarship like this. So thank you.
As a member of the Borica Community Food pantry, we thank you for your continued support. Every year, the Turkey Bowl donations come to us, and we really appreciate it.
I'm so glad we came up.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to comment? Great job. Okay, we have the consent agenda. So the format is Howard Greenspan Bill and CAM Education Law, approval of minutes of October 2025, and notification of disposal of surplus equipment. Does anybody have any questions?
Question, uh, who chaired it, Tony? The, uh, this is metal fab equipment. Obviously, we put a lot of time and effort. We modeling the shop, and this is stuff that they will need in.
This is stuff that, yeah, that was bought. Some of the stuff is like 10 years old. So in, I mean, we bought, I think we bought close to 50 rolling machines down there at this point in time. So we do have some surplus, and that will go, that'll go out through gov deals or whatever that, that.
It was on the website, hopefully.
Yep. And it'll be, you know, it'll be all for public, uh, public consumption, public auction, and then we'll dispose of it. And my guess is before we're all set and done down there, we'll probably get a few more items from them. But this is definitely helping them kind of clean up and start to organize the space at this point in time.
I do have one issue on the CAM Education Law Bill.
Yep.
I constantly get a bill that looks like it's never been paid, so I'm.
Yeah, and Ms. Doughty and I have gone back to the business office with that. There seems to be some disconnect between her billing date and our payment date. So we are, we are trying to resolve that. But for whatever reason, it seems like we're kind of crossing paths. When her bill comes in, our payment has already gone out or vice versa. But we will, we will continue to work on that.
Can I just make two comments? One, basically, so on the consent agenda under, we're approving, basically, we have a policy, basically, to keep, you know, like for payroll and all that. But one thing I think we need to put back on the agenda is basically, like, you have to basically, like, you know, certain members can approve payroll and, and, you know, so that keeps the lights on. But at every school committee, every point-to-point, everything that's a warrant should be on the thing to get approved. And, you know, about to give Howard a shout out, but we're still getting, like, OML, like, three or four. Like, I mean, can somebody, like, provide an update, like, what the status of what we're gonna do to fix this?
I believe those are all resolved at this point. Are all the OML complaints?
I believe so, yes.
No, I meant more like, basically, like, that doesn't mean we're getting on these bills, and we've seen them since September. I guess what's gonna be done long-term to address so we don't keep getting OML complaints? That's my, I understand, like, you know, we're all going through training, and I sent out that thing from the school committee conference that AG put on. Like, you're basically, you can do training, you can do all that. But I mean, that still doesn't mean the stuff we got filed. You can't do the community not to do that. But I mean, what's the plan to basically to address this, to stop having this to happen?
Well, I believe that that's an agenda, you know, later on in this piece, to talk about school committee meeting postings and packets and some changes that Ms. Doughty has brought forward. Her and I did attend the inspector general's training, I think, two weeks ago or whatever it was. So she, we have some definitive recommendations, but that's a little.
Okay. No, I think that's, we should come up with a plan, like, to address that stuff. But, you know, you can't keep on having this stuff, you know.
Yeah, to go back to your request about payroll and the warrants, do you want that whole thing included in the packet for people to review?
That school committee conference, that's what the AG, I talked to the guy at Worcester, he says, this is an AG said, even if you have that policy to approve payroll and other warrants, anything that's approved should go through that basically says the school committee has reviewed everything from point-to-point. So if the payroll went out between the last school committee and this meeting, everything in between should be in that packet.
We'll work on that.
Okay, thank you.
What was you doing? Prove the consent agenda.
Mine? Uh, all in favor?
I like it.
And opposed, unanimous.
Okay, I am, I'm gonna try to stand again to go back to Kent's comment about dust practices. I think Taren and I sat through a session together from a school from out Western Mass, and one of their recommendations was to standardize the superintendent's report. So it's always kind of the same information month to month. So moving forward, we're gonna try to do that. Budget, subcommittee budget and capital facilities had met. I think it was last week or the week before. I made a couple adjustments to this timeline based on feedback from that group. One thing that we did want to put out to the full committee here, we have tentatively scheduled the public budget hearing for the same night as the school committee meeting. I know some years we've tried to split those up and do them on different nights. There really wasn't a consensus, but that's something that we're gonna ask people to think about. And as a group, we're gonna come back to you for a decision about how you want to handle that moving forward. Again, other than that, there really wasn't much that changed on this from the first time that I shared it. If we have updates moving forward, I'll make sure that I point out specifically what it is that has changed. Class of 2030 applications. I do have a little caveat to throw out here for this. We did not open applications till November 1st this year. Again, we were going through revising our admissions policy, making adjustments to the mandated lottery that we're gonna be forced to follow moving forward. So we held off until that policy had been approved by the school committee at the October meeting. So a lot of this stuff that you see is actually almost a month behind where we were last year. But I did include four years. So if you go back to class of 20, class of 2027, which is this year's juniors, at this time we had 208 applications. Moved to, you know, 2023, the class of 2028, we had 382. Last year at this time, we had 454. This year, we have 344. Now, the other thing that I do want to make people aware of, we are also kind of transitioning with the changes in the regulations. It does now say that all middle school kids can or should attend a tour during the school day. We really pushed our roadshow last year, the last few years, and we were out early and we were doing those presentations in middle schools. What we're doing now, for the most part, is when the kids come here to visit, we do an abbreviated version of that to either kick it off or wrap it up at the end. So I think, I think there's a few things that are playing into this. But regardless, as of last Friday, almost 25% of the eighth graders in our district have already applied. And we're less than a month into the application window. So while our numbers are down a little bit, I'm still encouraged. We're still seeing a lot of response around this. Burlington Middle, uh, the middle school from Burlington is scheduled to come, I think, in a week or two. I know we've been working with Wilmington and Tewksbury to finalize plans for them. I think Borica's still kind of up in the air, but we will work to get all of the eighth graders in here. I think all of you know where I stand on this. We've talked about this since I've started. You don't know what we do if you haven't been here and seen the shops up and running during the school day. That is something that we implemented in with Bedford, I think was our first community. We brought Hanscom eighth graders over for at least the last two years, and I think Burlington's been here for the last two years. So we're really looking forward to expanding this to all of our eighth graders and making sure everybody makes an informed decision. Enrollment numbers, we are down a little bit. We did have a few, a few of our ninth graders made the decision to go back to descending schools. We've actually lost a couple upper classmen as well. It's that time of year where people kind of start to reevaluate what they want to do long-term, and some students and families make the decision. We also have had some students that have moved out of district as well. So we are down, let's see, about eight students from where we were in October. Co-op updates. This is the class of 2025, this year's seniors, 37,894 hours worked. 59% of the students are out, 178 students participating. And to date, they've grossed $611,297. So again, we're up to a very strong stack there. And I only anticipate that those numbers will grow as the school year goes on. I know Mr. Smith was working on getting some additional students out. We have some students that end of quarter one would become eligible based on grades and attendance from last year. Again, breakdown by communities here. Two of our Bedford students, 74 from Borica, 14 from Burlington, 41 from Tewksbury, 47 from Wilmington. Like I said, 178 out of 301. Just an update here, I've been marking these things completed as we go. We did submit the chapter 74 viability document in the educational profile after the October meeting. Those have been completed. The enrollment questionnaire was completed earlier. The school building committee's been formed. Our compliance certification is sent in. Right now, the two outstanding items we have, we have to do a routine and capital maintenance plan, which I've been working with our facilities director on. That is due by the end of January, January 28. And then we also have to have funding in place. We have to have a vote to fund our feasibility study. The district has requested a 30-day extension to get us till the end of May so we can get through town meetings. They have acknowledged the receipt of our extension but have not given us any additional information at this time. So we will wait and see what they say on that. Allerton Hill is the group that we brought on board to run our PR this year. We made a decision to move away from an in-house full-time employee and contract with them. They shared some pretty interesting data with me, and I, again, I just wanted to push this out to the committee. I had to look this up. So when you look at, they were talking to me about reach and interactions, and I had no idea what they were talking about. But essentially, total views is the number of times the profile has been viewed by anybody. Pretty much anybody out there in social media land has somehow interacted with whatever that, that post was. Reach is people who actually went into or accessed the page or the content that they were viewing. And then impressions is the time that, is the number of times that that has either been reposted or reshared or retweeted or whatever it is. So when we look at those metrics, they give us, they give us monthly updates on both Facebook and Instagram. I don't really have anything to compare this to, but I was, I was kind of blown away when we look at Facebook total views are up 82.3%. The reach is up almost 80%. The interactions are up like almost 49%. And then when you look at Instagram, the numbers are similar, but our interactions on Instagram are up 97%, almost double what we were seeing in activity in September. So they have a team. They send out regular updates. I'm not on Facebook. I'm not on Instagram, but I do see them on LinkedIn. I see them on some of the other social media platforms. I will say that they have been awesome to work with, very professional, very detail-oriented, very focused on what their role is. Ms. Doughty has been working hard on some of the website updates that were discussed by this group. Again, just, and she's been working with Mr. Bendel as well. We have reorganized the page, so committee members and community members, if you get a chance, pop on there. We did move links to the top of the page so you don't have to scroll through all of this stuff to find meeting information, audits, budgets, all of that other stuff. Ms. Doughty went and, I use the term bios very loosely. Essentially, it has your town of residence, the year you were elected. We didn't get into, you know, where you went to high school or what your college major was or anything like that. We did create new sections to help organize, so the budget has its own tab or link or whatever you want to call it. Same thing for the audit piece. And we've uploaded the documents that we have to that. And again, just, you know, if you have any feedback, committee members, please reach out to Ms. Doughty, and she will, she will gladly pass that, either modify it herself or pass it on to Mr. Bendel so that we can, again, continue to work to make that more, more user-friendly. And that is all I have for right now.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Sorry.
In connection with the admissions, I wanted to thank, with the committee here, thank you, Tony and Jeff McGrath and Andy Pigeon and our former reporter Sophia Galant for the effort they gave last Wednesday night to a Bedford parents gathering here. Really was extremely well received. I think the fact that the last people left the building about 8:30 or so at night, poor presentation by the admissions people, extremely well received and gotten good feedback on that. So we should appreciate all of you staying an extra night to do that. And hopefully, it'll be reflected in the numbers up there.
Did you mention how many people sent in?
About 40, 35, 40 parents.
And I believe you also said that open house was very well attended.
Yes. And again, we've, we've never, we've tried to take counts in the past, unless you have somebody that's like a really good door person. It's either super, it's super elevated or super reserved. But anecdotally, teachers I taught, all the staff members I talked to, all the administrators I talked to, I think we probably had close to double a turnout that we, that we normally see for open houses.
Oh, my question was, oh, because we don't have old business on here, I noticed. And so.
I didn't know we had.
Well, about the spray booth, whatever. I was just going through some of my notes from before. Did we ever find out about, you know, the rules and regulations that our kids had to have certification, but other places didn't?
So our vocational director's been doing a little, little digging into that. And from what we found, there's a little bit more to that story. So last thing, last time I talked to him, he was gonna try to gather some real specifics as to what each school was doing. We did find that one school is actually having the kids spray water. They're not even actually mixing paint. So there's, there's a few different options out there. I don't have a filed document, but I will, I will make sure we do that.
All right. Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right. Oh, my God. Subcommittee reporters. Budget committee.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the budget subcommittee met on November 18th, 2025. In your package, you received information on the three bullet points, salary transfers, TMA, TMS Solutions Incorporated, year-to-date budget summary. The salary transfers, everybody should have that in your packet to look at. This was presented to the subcommittee, and we had some questions to the superintendent on why some of these numbers were the way they were. I don't know if you have any further information on that?
So we've been, we've been digging into that, and what we've been finding is there was, there's some inconsistencies into what line items things were charged to. Some of it is historical. There's, there's stuff in there from employees that have not been here for a long time. And whatever role was added, we're just kind of tagged to that particular department. So based on, if, again, if the committee votes to complete these transfers, our inter-business manager will go in and make all of those adjustments. And then, again, that, that will provide even more clarity for us as to where exactly we have surpluses, and we can capture that moving forward.
And just so people understand, the purpose of it is basically, so now that your actuals are coming in, so your systems update, and then your future budgets, the base for that is incorrect. So once all the contracts have been solved, you adjusted for your 3% for all the employees, that's what's in units.
Yes. Yeah. So we've encumbered, we always encumber salaries for the whole years, I guess. And again, that, those list of transfers, you'll notice some of those account balances are negatives, and some of them are overfunded. So again, this is, this is an effort to balance out those accounts. Again, some of that can be attested to turnover of staff. Some of that, again, is more of a things were billed to the wrong department or people were affiliated with a different, a different, a different area in the budget than they should have been.
Okay. Can we, Beth, can we vote on this separately?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the salary transfers as presented.
Second. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any polls, unanimous?
Second item was the document from TMS Solutions Incorporated contract extension. We had a discussion about this. Tony, did you want to invite everybody?
We, again, TMS is under contract to the end of December. We've already started budget planning season, and we're looking at trying to have some continuity here. After some discussion at the budget subcommittee, I believe the recommendation was to extend it through the end of January and then revisit in January as to exactly what we wanted to do with that moving forward.
Are they just curious? So as a consultant, are they gonna present some type of report? Like, ask an email?
I reached out to them and asked them to formalize that.
Looks like that's essentially what is needed. You need something in writing on their.
Letterhead, sign.
Yes, basically.
I did follow up.
Is that something that can be shared?
Yeah. He, yeah, once I get it, I will. I haven't, I haven't received anything from them yet.
So if we vote to accept this, we're extending it to January 31st, certainly? Okay. I'll make a motion that we extend contract to TMS Solutions Incorporated to January 31st, 2026. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
No.
I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Yeah, no, I don't approve.
Oh, you said no. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. She's.
Nine of. Okay, I didn't know if she was saying, just so I didn't.
That's okay.
Okay, the last bullet point has to do with the year-to-date budget summary, which is in your packet. And you can see what's going on. This was as of last week. So we.
And I think we've captured the vote in the, in the earlier one to do the transfers. But I mean, there are some, there are some accounts that are overdrawn on this. But again, once those salary item adjustments are made, that should all clear up. We should be back, we should be back.
So we should get a better feel.
Without any negative balances on those.
We should have a better feel by December.
I was gonna ask, when's, when would we get a better feel from this?
So, I mean, I'm not sure if the transfers will get done tomorrow. It's a half day, but I would assume that the first week in December, those will get taken care of, and then we can get an update from then. Again, that's not something that I, I ever do, so I'm not sure how much time that takes.
One comment. With the hiring of the district treasurer, I did reach out to the woman at Neshoba. Like, me and Charlie are gonna go talk to their finance people about.
Their business manager?
No, their, like, their chair.
Oh, they're commander.
To figure out, like, what they do with the district treasurer coming on board, basically, like, what types of reports they prepare, like, to review that whole process, because they have a pretty.
What's that guy, Charlie?
Charlie.
Charlie.
Yeah, so I think they, I think I got a response today, so.
Yeah, they have a new treasurer as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we're gonna try and set up time to.
Go in. So Mr. Williams, excuse me, is on board.
Yep, he was actually here yesterday. Yep.
Signature appeared on the warrant.
David, he's been working with Mary Rubio, our comptroller, and, you know, trying to get systems set up and figure out how they're gonna share stuff back and forth and get access to those files.
That's good. Committee.
He's, he's very excited.
Oh, I'm glad we, we found him. That's good. Do we need to vote on that?
I wouldn't say no.
I don't think we do.
It was just a, basically, an update.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, facilities and capital planning subcommittee.
We met on last Tuesday. It was actually joining the budget subcommittee. A lot of us on both committees presented the, you could put your app in there, packet, the different numbers that are, that have been, must have been paid out, what you do with Tony out for one. Any more members have any question on the sheet?
Just the capital budget. Yeah, so we did go through the F1. Uh, just the capital budget. Yeah, so we did go through the FY twenty-six capital budget piece and I did, I did provide an update to that committee about. Uh, some of the items on that are either ordered and are, we're waiting delivery. Some of the projects have been completed. Uh, some of them are obviously in in the very early stages, the the fieldhouse renovations, um, the sewer line has been connected. Um, we're waiting, I'm waiting for estimates on plumbing fixtures, electrical fixtures, tile, uh, bathroom petitions, and then we're gonna start to move forward, all of that stuff as well. Um, we did have a facilities meeting, uh, in-house facilities meeting, non-school committee facilities meeting. Um, and we are targeting, our goal is to have that open and ready for use for graduation in June. So fingers crossed, um, everything goes, goes according to plan.
Well, we did, we cut the ribbon together.
Just like.
Oh, so Tony, we didn't, I didn't get this.
Oh, sorry, you just pointed out to me, I thought.
As capital? Oh, it didn't go out in the packet?
No, it's not.
Okay, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
I think he was just in the budget capital.
The budget packets, sorry.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah, we'll have to send that out.
Thank you.
There you go, thank Nicole, be on the, on the school website.
Regular subcommittee.
Okay, so um, we actually didn't meet. We already had a discussion about it last, we met today.
Right.
So I'll have to give you an update the next meeting, but we did discuss a few items which we're gonna bring forward to the December meeting. And they include the competency determination rad requirements for class of twenty twenty-six, the program of studies just um. Danica updated us on some changes. Most of it was just um. Like name changes to the programs and we officially have pushed the master schedule to September twenty twenty-seven. While the launch of the new master schedule, but uh we will provide a full update at the next meeting, the December meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm also wellness, the um. Oh, sorry.
Um, for the graduation requirements, have we gotten clear data from Desi about rules?
No, the proposal that's coming forward is for the class of twenty twenty-six. Um, we are still awaiting guidance on twenty twenty-seven and moving forward. So, but we also wanted to make sure that we had stuff in place because. We're coming up on December of those students' senior year and um, we wanted to be fair and consistent and make sure all that stuff was documented. And I also believe we were, we were passed a mandate that it has to be done uh by December thirtieth, so.
Okay, yes.
We probably should mention in that context also that the the waiting for the implementation of the new schedule is also based on. Desi not having weighed in on implications of our proposed new schedule.
Yeah, and just to expand on that a little bit, there's um, there's always been a foreign language waiver for vocational schools. They would, they would allow students to substitute CTE programs for that and still meet mass core. Um, there's, there's some rumors floating around that that may go away and that all students can be required to take foreign language. Uh, there's discussion about having some type of financial literacy required for all high school students. Uh, there's been conversations about them being a little more explicit about their expectations for PE and wellness. Uh, now the regulations just say you must take gym, but um, there's some conversations about how many hours it's gonna be, how many years it's gonna be. Um, so again, with all of those things kind of in flux, the last update we got was early March, um, before we get some final answers on that stuff. And it's just too far into uh the planning cycle for the schedule for us to to hit reset and try to pivot to do this for next fall.
Nice, no wellness, thank you.
Can I just, so um, we had originally scheduled um audit and organizational development subcommittee meetings on the night. Um, I know a lot of members have conflicts and I also, I will, I will not be here for that meeting. I reached out to both chairs. Both chairs said that they were fine and looking for a future date to hold those meetings, but um, just in case people were looking at that or planning on maybe attending one of those. Um, we are gonna push those. We haven't really made any decision on what we're gonna reschedule it to, but um, just to be transparent with everybody.
Wellness.
Okay, so um, the wellness committee met uh in October and um, I was not notified, so I didn't, I was not in attendance, but. Um, Kevin Caruso um did update me, sent me the minutes. So it was regarding like um updates from food services and um Mary Leach, and I apologize, I don't know who all these people are, but. Um, they introduced um Wellhubs, which is affiliated with ESAP. Um, they're looking into making this a resource available to Shawshank students. Um, Kevin had talked with Angela Kira, who's the VSAP rep for Shawshank. Uh, food services, they said that they've eliminated the salad bar. It's been a five week, um, after a five week menu rotation, they decided it was just wasted space. And the produce was getting thrown out. Um, they added a grab and go, or or they said they're gonna make it into a grab and go smoothies and things like that. Um, they eliminated the part-time position for that, maybe to add staff that covered that. Um, and then they said that they're gonna be adding possibly more warmers for grab and go. Um, updates from Christie, she's uh, they hired an additional power lifeguard. They have five PE wellness, uh, people who are certified CPR and the AED, which I believe is the um, you know, if you have a heart attack. Swimming is back. Um, ninth and eleventh graders, it's required. Uh, tenth grade is challenging for numbers, so it's still optional for them. Health has a classroom, not sure what that means, but I'm assuming we must have.
They have a dedicated classroom.
Okay. Uh, fishing and archery activities open in the fall. Um, there's a PR firm and wellness initiatives update in um progress with Jay. So we're gonna hear back more on that on December sixteenth. And um, then some updates from Liz. Uh, they said new software system, something called SNAP. And then maintenance service for A, the AEDs is in place, because some of their, some of the AEDs throughout the building need maintenance. And then they also talked about a yoga club, trying to find a room to do that. Anyway, and then they are meeting on December sixteenth, which I'll attend.
Alright, thank you.
My apologies, I thought, I thought the other.
I know, I know, I did.
I didn't mean to jump the list.
Make sure they, AEDs are all up to date.
Yes, yeah, we, we bought it, we bought a maintenance contract.
Okay. But new business, internal audit.
So um, at the request of of Mr. Moffett, um, I did meet with some representatives from CBIZ. Um, that proposal, I believe, was sent to everybody in the packet. Um, it, no, I mean, we did not do any type of competitive solicitation or anything at this point in time. Um, but um, you know, just based on the information that they provided and the scope of what they're proposing. Um, I believe, let me, let me find it in here, I think we're somewhere. The range.
Maybe the fee?
Yeah, the fee.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Yeah, but then if you go down, if you go down lower, there's actually a seven percent technology and administrative fee. Um, so the the combined low estimate to do that scope, the scope of that audit is seventy thousand dollars to ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, they do charge an hourly fee, so that is um, subject to change based on exactly how many, how many hours they spend. Um, if they require more time to dig into things or um additional research that needs to be done as part of that. So um, again, it's on the agenda. If the committee wants, I can start to reach out to other firms and see if anything's comparable. Obviously, for something in that price range, it would have to go out um as a procurement bid, it would have to go through the business office, it would have to be advertised, we'd have to solicit. Um, proposals and all of that other fun stuff, but um, that's what I found.
So did CBIZ come back and they said basically, because it's, they're doing our external audit, is there's no conflict, basically, because they have a separate group? Is that what they?
So our, our, our auditor, John Jasowitz facilitated this conversation. CBIZ has a different division. Um, not a hundred percent sure, but based on the accents, I believe they're out of Texas. Um, so the, again, we had a Zoom session with these two gentlemen. Um, this is what they specialize in. Um, the proposal that he sent me mirrors, they do a lot of stuff for, for cities and towns. Um, and the, the proposal he sent me mirrors something that they just recently completed for, again, he didn't tell me where it was, I don't know what state it was in. Um, but yeah, they have a separate group. Um, and again, having Mr. Jasowitz on that call. Uh, they were having conversations back and forth about, you know, where does, where does one scope of work end and the other scope of work begin? To make sure that there are no conflicts um in having them do that in the process.
Yeah, I mean, the comments I'll make is I read through it, it's pretty thorough. I mean, I think it's due time that it's done. I mean, I would have preferred it was done earlier in the year, but I mean, I mean, from, I don't know what other people's opinion is, but from a financial steward, I think we. I mean, I think CBIZ took over the other one, I think they do a pretty good job. They've got some, the first couple of years, some rough, but we kind of worked through that, but I think they're reputable firm. But I think from a, you know, financial standpoint, we should be reaching out to, yeah, I don't, Brian, maybe you can comment, but I think it's just babies from a, I think we should look at some other firms.
Well, I mean, if we move forward with this behalf.
No, I know, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah, exactly.
You just can't assign.
Brian, we.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that. I think it, you know, it's important that, you know, we have a clear articulation of what it is we hope to get from this process. That's different from any input that TMS or CBIZ have provided. Um, and it would seem from the scope of services they presented, I agree with you, Ken, it's very thorough, very solid. Probably is a good model for an RFP uh for those services. There just would have to be a sense of confidence that we're going to get something really either new or different, or it's different in terms of how far back it goes. Um, because I don't think that's one thing that's clear as to um. Whether they're looking at a really looking back process, review mirror process. Or, because the only reference I think is at the beginning of their proposal, they talk about based on the FY twenty-five budget and typical school operations. So if what we're looking, if the goal was to, you know, get some kind of incredible insight into where we've been, say, over the last five years. And they're not gonna do that, then this isn't within the, this isn't the scope of what we want.
I think, I think that's what we do want. I think if you're only going back like two years, you're not doing the full what needs to be done. I think you need to go back at least five years. I understand it's expensive and I understand it's like cumbersome, it's basically, but it, it needs to be done. I mean, I gave you the example of the one I went on Burlington. I mean, it's, it shows that you're taking it seriously. I'm not gonna get into the details, you can use Google. But Google back seven years, there was one, they brought in a firm out of Wober. Again, it was a forensic audit, different type of audit, but it shows that the district's taking it seriously. And again, in that one, they weren't able to piece it together, but at least it showed that they went through a process to review it. And I think it's high time that it's done. And I understand it's cost and it will be additional, you know, on staff and whatever, but I think at the end of the day, it's gonna come out a better process. I think it's, it's due time.
Leading this, I, I think Brian's first, first impression there, I think this is FY twenty-five. I don't think this is a reach back. I think this is current, for when, current operations and current functions.
Yes, what's the approximate timeline for an RFP? How long does the RFP have to be in place? Two weeks and then we meet and choose somebody? Like, who meets and and chooses? Say we get four proposals. Who determines, who, who chooses a proposal?
Yeah, I think it matters how we wanna do that. If you wanna let the audit, subcommittee determine that?
So this is something that probably was, it can't just start in early twenty twenty-six theoretically. Okay, thank you.
But that's, but that's a valid point to Brian's point, if that's like what, it's, it's only based on fiscal year twenty-five, that's what's gonna drive, like, I think that's a question you need to ask in these proposals, it's basically like.
Right, you have to change.
Yeah, you have to basically say, define to them basically how far you wanna go back and that's what's gonna drive the cost.
I think we're probably gonna have to.
No, yeah, I agree, yeah, exactly, yeah.
We would define it and then change it.
Which, which budget is this going to come on?
Yeah, that's an issue. Where will we get the money?
TBD.
So again, once, once those salary transfers are made, we will have a much better idea as to which accounts we have surplus in and which ones we, we don't.
Don't.
So, I mean, but I'm, again, we're, we get so many moving parts at this, I mean, that's a age and a half of transfers. Those all have to be processed and landed and then we can take a look and see. Um, but that is a, that is a great question.
Right, well, then I guess in the meantime, since you'll find, what do we wanna do? Like, get a big, or see what that chied five years back? What are we looking to do?
I need some, yeah, we need some direction.
Right, yeah, that's what I, I was comfortable with.
Uh, this is completely on topic, but I'm sure as I never asked it, where do we stand with E and D, which is another potential source of funds?
So they're work, they're working their way through that. Um, there has been some problems with the starting balance and ending balance from. The previous year and and whether those adjustments were made as they were documented and what was documented was made, and so we are currently digging through that. Um, I know um, the gentleman uh that, uh, the gentleman that owns TMS is the one who was personally working on getting that certification done.
But I think that's a key difference to note. I mean, this is an actual accounting firm, like the one I rep, the reference from Burlington. The consultant is coming in to do, and again, they can prepare a report, but it's not an accounting firm. That's the key difference here that needs to be put forth. And I get cost and all that, but I think only doing one year back is not gonna. So I think that's what we need to determine is like how far you wanna go based on cost and so.
So we are, we're gonna go out to bid, we understand this correctly.
You guys gotta determine the scope of what you want. You can't just say, send us a price and then say, oh, now we wanna do five years.
Can we do a price for three years versus five years? Can we ask in our RFP, what is it gonna cost to do a three-year look back? What is it gonna cost to do a five-year look back?
When you post that, you have to be very specific as to the terms and conditions of what that costs. So I can reach out to CBIZ and ask them to update their, this proposal based on that, but you can't write a bid spec. It says we might do this, we might do that, we might do, the bid spec has to say, this is exactly what we want, this is what we expect you to deliver, and this is the timeframe to do it.
But I think based on this cost, I think, I mean, I recommend like three years. I mean, that's, I think that's a good starting point. I mean, at the end of the day, basically, the bottom line is, is like even when we went out to bid for the external auditor, the bottom line was the two that we went with. Or we narrowed it down to both got bought out by CBIZ. So the bottom line is, you're probably gonna end up with.
We only, we only got two submissions.
Yeah, submit, yeah, exactly. On top of that, so I think that's the other thing, is you're probably end up with CBIZ anyways. So, but I think what they have is pretty thorough, my opinion.
Does this cost pretty typical of what you would be getting? I mean, seventy to ninety thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah. I can find out that one in Burlington, that's like eight years ago, but I can find out what they.
And how, how long would it take for them to do the work?
Well, if you look at their full schedule either, you have planning two weeks, walkthroughs five weeks. So two, seven, ten, thirteen, sixteen, about eighteen weeks, more or less.
That could be, that could be more if this is, if Brian is, if Brian's right, Brian's right, this is only one year back. I mean, now you're talking more expense more, but I mean, that's what you have to.
Any deficiencies in the input system or inputs that on our end, if there's problems with. The MUNIS entries from different years, or there's incompatibility, or they have to then make those. A budget adjustment, it's gonna obviously complicate what they do and it's gonna lengthen it. It's just, that's just reality.
It also raises the price.
Right, exactly.
It's probably gonna be a fixed component and a variable component, although there is, a variable that we can't control.
Yep.
We may have a hard time getting a fixed price for this, because based on this proposal, it said they gave us a range for both. The audit itself and the technology fee.
Yeah.
When we put this thing, when we put this thing out as an RFP, there may not be any respondents, depending upon how it's written.
With everybody's pleasure.
It would, it would seem though, the decision should be made tonight is, when do we want an RFP to go out? When, when would be useful to go out, assuming that. If there's a consensus to do this at all, when do we want it to go out? And then look at, make sure the scope is something that everybody agreed to. If there's, now, it's a chicken or the egg thing, because some people may say, well, I'm willing to do it, it doesn't cost so much money. Um, putting it out to bid doesn't really cost that much. We may decide, once we get the responses, this is not worth doing.
To throw an additional wrench here, I think that audit firms are actually exempt from combines. So that's when we did the last one, I think that was that process.
Because we did RFPs, because we did two proposals that we moved in review.
Yeah, they, I mean, they have an exemption under, under chapter thirty B, but you can still put things out that are, that are exempt and it's.
No, I'm stating that basically you don't, it's, I don't think it's a legal requirement, it's best practice, but I don't think you. No, I'm stating that basically you don't, it's, I don't think it's a legal requirement. It's best practice, but I don't think you have to do it by law. That's like a firm, like this would fall under an audit service. You wouldn't necessarily have to, an accounting service. So that would fall inside of that law, but I think your point, it's best practice to, to follow that. Yeah, I agree.
Definitely put it out to bid.
Yep.
So I get, as I say, I think the question is when we want any RFP to be issued? Is it in the December timeframe? Is it the January timeframe? How does it relate to other decisions that are being made, issues that have to be addressed? And, because all it might be is getting a number that then causes us to say, we, we cannot go forward with this actual contract if it's just too much of a budget buster.
I think we should put out an RFP for three years sooner rather than later. Because we don't know what the final number is going to be. And like you said, that may be a deal breaker, but like Ken said, we've been talking about this for a long time. Because if we put out an RFP, we're not obligated to pick somebody. We're just.
I think we should go beyond three years.
I agree.
We need to have a starting point somewhere. I think I, I'd rather go beyond three years.
I'd look at three, five, yeah, three, five.
Yeah, I agree. It has to be.
But I mean, it sucks as the cost, but the cost is it's been deferred long enough. So basically it's, you got to pick your poison. I mean, it's either you're serious or you're not serious. So that show.
Well, if we, once we get a cost, right, let's say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we know we don't have it in the budget. So when we're budgeting for next year, we can try to figure out, okay.
But if you also do subsequent years, they might reduce the cost because you're adding additional services. So this may be for a one year, but if you go to five years.
I think that'd be less.
I'm like, I don't.
I'm laying on the. I don't think it's going to be less.
All right, let's, so, how many people want five years? I think, I think it should be five.
I make a motion that we ask Tony, um, to draft an RFP for a five-year look back.
No, is this something the district treasurer should be doing? No?
No.
The district treasurer really probably shouldn't be involved in the audit.
Okay.
But this should be completely separate from the external. That's why it's important to, because it's a same.
Supposed to be checks and ballots. Their firewall.
Do I have a second? Do we have a motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Um, next item we skipped over, um, at the October meeting, just because of time constraints. Um, just as a reminder, uh, I think it was the September meeting. Hold on one second. I actually haven't studied. I'm sure she did. And I messed up the order of all the stuff that's in here. Um, who cares? Yeah, other file. Print out the stuff. So back in, um, September, at the September meeting, I had put forth a proposal. I asked the committee to make a decision about moving forward, whether they wanted to do annual evaluations myself, or whether they wanted to do every two years, um, which is allowable on the evaluation piece. I did throw out some proposed goals that everybody had seen. Um, one related MSBA, one related to, um, the adoption of the master schedule, one to implement the mandated admissions lottery. And then the two that the rest of the administrative team had adopted, which is around classroom and shop visits. And then also, um, doing some more work around the school climate survey. I did give a proposed timeline for what this could potentially look like. That was all spelled out, um, through, um, March of twenty twenty-seven. If that, that's what the committee wanted to do. Um, I also threw out there four focus elements that I had suggested. There was some discussion about the committee about wanting to add additional ones. Uh, I know Ms. Stoudt sent this out to everybody, uh, emailed September twenty-fourth. So this would have been after that meeting. And people were asked to take a look at this and come back with recommendations. The past few years, I think we've done six or maybe last year we did seven. And again, I just proposed those four. That doesn't mean that that's what committee has to go with. But we are coming up on the end of the calendar year. You look at the proposed timeline that I had given, you know, I mean, at the December meeting, I proposed to give an update on goals. Um, we still haven't agreed to, are we doing a one year? Are we doing a two year? The goals haven't been approved. I haven't been told what the focus elements are. Um, we really, I need some, I need some direction. I need a decision made on what we're going to do with this.
All right, anybody?
Well, I think two years.
Two years, we, we, I think the consensus was a two-year was probably, we all felt that, because we tabled it last month. Two-year cycle, Tony, is probably appropriate. So I would.
So that timeline that's in there, we'll just.
It's fine, it's fine.
It would be helpful.
So we're not actually doing any formal paperwork.
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Tony, for the first three years, were you evaluated every year?
Yes.
Yes, that, so that makes sense. So after three years, then it can go to two.
That's correct, yeah. Well, we don't have to fill any paperwork out in the spring. No, no, I'm just saying that. No, I don't want to put it on a two-year cycle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So Tony, I think, can I, I'm sorry. So I think during the summer, we talked about it, it's so helpful if, when you come and report. That whatever it is you're reporting ties directly into what those goals are. So it makes it much easier for us at the very end. So, yeah, that would be.
I can, I mean, if this gets approved, I can, I can start doing that.
It makes it just so much easier for everybody. Thank you.
Do you need to vote your goals in or anything? What do you want?
I, I mean, I, I would, but I, I mean, the other piece of it here is also the focus. We just going with the four focus elements I proposed. People want to add more. I mean, it's, it's all kind of one ball of wax.
I'll respond with what you're saying.
I mean, you want to remind, I, I can tell you what they were. So, uh, in standard one, it was instruction. Ensures that practices in all settings reflect high, uh, reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage students in our personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness. Standard two was fiscal systems. Develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with the district and school level goals and available resources. Uh, three was engagement. Actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the class, school, district and community. And then, uh, standard four was shared vision. Successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. I don't really care for the way the last one's worded. I think it should say something about career and technical pathways, but, um, that's how it's in the standard.
Okay.
All right, so do I have a motion? Do I have any discussion? Oh, we need a motion.
A motion with two years as outlined on, on September.
All right.
And I'll second that, actually.
Okay, thanks. Session again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item on the, sorry, I'm not going to cut you off, but the next item on the agenda, I did have two members forward me presentations from sessions that they went to, which I do have. Don't remember which ones first, but if we're ready to move forward with that, I'll gladly, um, some of them are kind of long. So I don't know if you want me to just roll through them. You, you tell me what you want to do.
Yeah.
But we don't stop.
Uh, yeah, so I think Ken, I think this is the one you went to.
Yep.
Okay.
Tell me if there's anything you want me to stop on, but.
They're all on that website.
Yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
Say when.
When?
Nobody just.
No, I said, uh, maybe, maybe it's probably available if anybody wants to.
Okay.
I mean, Cliff Notes version was the.
Something specific from that.
Yeah, I mean, Cliff Notes version was the guy, he was an assistant AG at a Worcester that basically did a discussion on open meeting law. It's pretty good. Like he actually did a really good presentation, went through like, one of the things he talked about was like, you know, shushing registering. Basically, so the school committee, basically the main posting is on the school committee website because that's a regional school. I mean, he was like, so you go to one that's twenty-two districts or twenty-two schools. Basically the central focal point, but that's attorney, attorney general's office. So you're still going to tell the towns where to post it. But the issue is, is like you can't control it. They stick it to the duck, the board outside the selectman's office. But that refers people to go to that. And the guy went through like, you know, how the meeting and when it should be, or agendas should be posted. You know, so there's a lot of good content in there, like, um, you know, also that, you know, like, uh, there's, he said, there's like train, like you guys did it. Is like, yeah, the AG provides, I'd recommend people to do that. It, it's, uh, if you want the AG's website, it's, it's like an hour and a half, like, um, you know, uh, review you can do. You know, and then signing the thing every year that you've read open meeting law is kind of important too, because it shows you take it seriously. So. No, I, I thought it was a good presentation.
Did you also go? On when?
Yeah. I didn't send slides.
Oh, no, I know.
I just, yeah.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's other updates. Do you want to go through the slides first? Because.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm had something too. Okay.
Let me get through these. Ron, you tell me what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, you know, spend ten.
Legislative updates.
Yeah, we went to a session, Jason Fraser was the other, uh, MASC president and two, uh, two aides, um, two gentlemen, I believe. They are, they worked for Senator and Rep, and now they work for MASC. And so I just, we just kind of flavor what's out there. Um, yeah, keep going, Tony. Trying to think. Uh, the regionals, okay, back up a little more. Regional tests, uh, caught my eye. Uh, these are legis, this is legislation that's been filed. Uh, and it's almost like a two, I, I learned a lot. It's a two-year cycle to even get this to the finish line. There's one right there. Uh, House, uh, six fifty-one, Senate, I can't read that.
Three fifty-eight.
Yeah, uh, and the representative and the senator put their name on it, um, talking about, uh, you know, we don't, this is out there. Yeah, it's great ideas and we, you know, down, will it make to the finish line? I don't know. I mean, that's what's going on. Thank you. Keep going. What else we hear?
Yeah, I think one of, one of the great ones in here, if this passes, is they're going to, they want to raise the, uh, the re, the refund rates for new construction for vocational schools to, to acknowledge that there is, there is additional costs and extra costs. There's also.
We talked about the lottery, um, and Jason, uh, he fought the good fight. He said, and he came out bloodied. But, um, we'll see, you know, um, we're going to see what happens as we get closer to the, to the, to the real day, dear. Financial literacy, what else we hear?
Yeah, and my apologies for the way that this thing.
It didn't come in, I know.
The way that it was shared with us, there's a lot of typos.
Yep, I saw it myself. This is interesting here. And I was telling Charlie this. This is a bill would ensure a full membership of a school committee could convene an executive session as members of an initial screening and interview committee to review applications, develop interview questions, interview candidates for the super, and they're talking about changing this whole law, I think, if it gets to be signed.
Can you go back to a slide? Sorry.
I can see it, yeah, and I know this one.
The, the thing is mandatory structures regarding with two thousand and twenty-six. I don't remember if that was fully passed because that's something with the curriculum. If it is, that's coming up. I know I talked to you a little bit about that.
Yeah, the financial literacy.
It's the financial literacy, yeah. It's the financial literacy.
I don't know if that's one, yeah, I don't know if it's one percent.
Yeah, they're thinking it's going to happen really soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, again, it's another one. We haven't got any guidance on, but the rumors out there that they're going to make a similar.
It's going to pass, yeah.
They pass things all the time, so. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
We already do financial literacy on some levels.
Yeah, it's a input is optional. So now, now they want it, they want it standardized.
You know, but they have a curriculum.
Uh, what else going on? Chapter seventy, they're talking, yeah, they talk about doing, uh, the state was doing a tour. The DOE, was it? No, D.
DESE.
D, uh, doing a tour of, uh, the Department of Revenue also about, talking about chapter seventy.
Well, they're, they're our financial reps.
Okay.
For DESE, so they were doing a listening tour.
Because it's around the state. There was a couple that, there's one today, it was, uh, Bonacquett and tomorrow, Newton North. Um, so that's out there. So, um, yeah, they were, um, thank you. Yeah, very, very knowledgeable. These two gentlemen who now work for NISC, used to work for the legislators. And it's, yeah, it's these senators and reps, some on more communities than others, and things are kicked around. I did notice last time I think in my brain, uh, Jason did mention, and I, I was read the paper today. Uh, the, um, ballot question, they got enough signatures. Uh, and if it gets approved, or if the legislature acts on it, there's talk of dropping down the state income tax from five to four percent. If the legislature approves it, if they, if they set it, if they do that, it gets another twelve thousand. So that could be on the budget, on the, should be on the ballot for November twenty-six. They dropped it down from five to four percent state income tax. That could have repercussions. I don't know. They threw that out too. But again, and I think they said the reason all these things, all these ballot initiatives, there's like forty-four of them out there. Because people thought the, uh, there's, there's nothing being done at the legislature. So that's what happened with the MCAS thing. I know it's, it's fun. I know, we trust these legislators to do this work, but people say, I don't, we'll do it ourselves. It's in the, in the process. Anyway, thank you, Tony.
I know there was other people that went to, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I went to a couple. I actually went back to the website who's a, and I could not find slides for some of the ones I went to, so I couldn't share them. Um, I went to a couple with Tony, I think with both of them, about running a school, a meeting that doesn't last till midnight. And, um, they had a lot of good ideas. It was interesting because the two meetings, one was, um, representatives from a particular school department. And one was members of NISC and they a little bit conflicted, the, the suggestions they made. Um, for example, one that I remember is, so Tony does a superintendent's report. And one was saying that his entire report should be in the packet that goes out a couple of days early. And the other one was just saying, well, he should follow a guideline, you know, that, like Sarah was saying, follow certain things. Personally, I agreed with the second one because I would rather he give a current report. And then if he gets information today, he can give it tonight. If it's in the packet, if it's that prescribed, I think we'd be violating open meeting law if he gave information that wasn't, um, in his presentation. So that's again, you know, one of two ways that we can go. Talked about public comment, how it's great to have, but, um, to also be mindful of how many times are people allowed to speak throughout a meeting? How long are they allowed to speak? Do we respond? Things like that. There was one about school finance, which honestly was rather overwhelming. Regional schools are very complicated with their regional agreements and such. And then tie in school transportation and all that. Uh, I was really hoping to go back and see slides for that one and they weren't there. And I do want to follow up with the people that ran that one. See if I can get the slides. Um, the vocational meeting was very interesting. We talked a lot about, um, the, um, change in the admissions policy that we pretty much all don't like. And, you know, talk about financing and, you know, more money from MSBA and, you know, supporting vocational education in general. Um, I'm also the delegate. There was one thing to vote and it was to remove BMI as a, um, a thing that is done in the nurse's office. It passed, it's being removed. It's only a recommended, the way delegate votes work is it's a recommendation to the legislature to remove these things. And, uh, there was one gentleman who, you have to credit his integrity. He stood up and he said, I do not agree with this, however my commit, my committee does. So I will be voting to support this, even though I personally do not want to. And I believe he was the only vote in support of keeping it. Everybody else voted that it should go away. So kudos to him for his honesty and his integrity. But he, his committee did not get what they wanted because the resounding vote was to give it.
Wait a minute, you finally get to be the delegate and there was one question, doesn't it? Actually, I think it's the second time I've been the delegate and actually made it through the thing. It was one.
You deserve to be the delegate again next year.
I think so.
Next year, if everybody didn't notice, um, we are no longer going to Cape Cod. We are not going to Danvers.
Yes.
So, and I think Danvers will be good. We can save the district a little bit of money by not granting hotel.
I was amazed, wasn't it? When I checked in, the woman was like at the other hotel we stayed on, she wanted to charge us three bucks for parking. I'm like.
You're still mad about that.
I took care of that.
We straightened it out, Ken. We straightened it out.
I said it wasn't going to break me, but I'm like, ah.
It's okay. Don't worry about it. It's all straightened out.
So all I was going to say is that I actually, I attended also. And as a new, totally new school committee person, I found it really valuable, but very overwhelming in terms of all the information that's coming at you. But I went to ten of them and I sat with all of these guys and I took in information. And so I, I don't have any very specifics to share, but it was definitely, definitely something that people needed to do. So I look forward to next year, actually. Um, I emailed all of you, so you know what the highlights were. I went to a bunch of them, but those three that I sent in the email were my top three.
I really liked the, uh, ensuring safety with AI and Jeff Riley, who's actually, I think, the former DESI commissioner.
He is the commissioner.
So he was really knowledgeable and he made that presentation very interesting. He talked about things I didn't even know about. But AI bias, like AI can actually, if you use Brock versus another AI tool, they can have biases based. But AI bias, like AI can actually, if you use Brock versus another AI tool, they can have biases based on the information that's been put into them. So, he talked a lot about, you know, how you learn by using AI, but also how to be careful of it, because with the bias, there could be things that you're getting information on that aren't actually true, or um, and he used examples that we've probably seen on X or wherever you get your news from. But um, where they ask, you know, put George Washington in a picture, and he comes out a completely looking different man, it's not the man that's, is George Washington. Uh, something called AI hallucinations, voice clones, deep fakes, plagiarism, they talked about that. But um, they can basically, if they hear your voice, they can basically use your voice and create anything they want. So, those are all things that you need to be aware of. But one thing that was interesting was that they, his company, he does, you know, obviously he's not in that position anymore, but he works for nonprofit, and they do offer training, and um, they do it for like a very small amount of money. And, you know, since we're new to AI, and I think we are voting on an AI policy, or I think it's something's on the agenda related to that. Um, what is it? AI policy, vote for adoption, second reading. You know, it might make sense to have somebody like a third party come into the school, cha, cha, uh, train the staff. Uh, I don't know, I thought it was very interesting. Um, I also went to, do we have to meet until midnight? I really liked a lot of what they had to say. Um, they gave a lot of good tips on how to keep your meetings on track, how to post things in advance of the meeting to help keep the meeting moving along. Um, one thing that was very clear from all, I went to like eight, seven or eight presentations, or, and um, they, they talked about operating protocols a lot, and we as a school committee don't have operating protocols. And I believe that that is something that we should look into this year and adopt. I did ask Patty to add it to a future agenda. Um, they do have an MASC, our field director is Alicia Mallon, and she said that they come out in the summers and do this training to all sorts of, you know, school committees. So, she said it's free, it's part of our dues, or whatever we pay um, for these services. So, I think that would be smart, because the operating protocols are, you know, what we lean on and how we describe what we do as a, as a school committee. And I think that, that is, you know, useful. And then the last one was just outlier behavior, which had to do with like, you know, when you're dealing with school committee members, or people that are hard to get along with, or you have a difference of opinion with, and.
Talking about me?
Yep. And uh, you know, how you resolve those, you know, unconventional approaches and ways to find, you know, value in your differences. Because we are all different, we all have different opinion, you know, and I, you know, I liked that one a lot too. Again, the field director, Alicia Mallon, she would come in for that type of training too. And she said it, you know, she described what it is to me, and I thought it sounded really useful, so. Those are mine. Thank you.
We've met her, she's the one who came and helped us with the second half of our policy.
Yeah.
Uncle Dorothy Presover, she's right next to us.
The outlier one I, oh, right, sorry.
The show, right?
Yeah, the show, yeah. Did, I went to the outlier one too, me and Gwen went to that one. The lady that was on the show was board, she's also on MSAC, she talked about like, the operating one, they're, I think they either have one in place, or they're working through it. The other thing she said is like, they go through like an annual goal setting. They do like a self-assess, like a self-assessment, like a committee, for the committee. So I think those are things, and part of those of looking at. Uh, another one I actually did attend was, it was talking about relations with like town, I'm not gonna use my own town, but you can use Google. Actually, it was on the fifteenth, let's leave it at that. You can't see it when you drive by on Cameron Street, but it's probably greased into that, but uh, make your own decision. But uh, that's a Burlington joke, but anyways, moving on, come on. But it was about, but it was about relations with like town government, and it was talking about like how you get, and I think going into an MSBA, how you kind of like, you know, general relations with that, and then the MSBA basically for, you know, to get the word out there, so you can get, you know, so you don't run into what our town ran into, it's basically that you come to some common ground for that, so. Those slide, I thought that was a good, good session.
Anybody else have anything?
I, I will just say that um, one of the sessions that Taryn and I went to, um, one of the next agenda items that we have, is actually some stuff that came out of that, that um, we're gonna bring forward to the committee, and that kind of dealt with the training that Miss Stoudy and I had completed, so.
All right, school committee postings and packets.
So, um, this is kind of a two-parter. Um, in the packet, Miss Stoudy had sent out this information that we received from the Inspector General's office, um, indicating that we can actually um, become designated to post our own agendas on our website. Um, there is a process that we have to follow, which involves the school committee obviously voting to formalize this. Uh, and then uh, there's some notification to our sending communities, uh, and essentially, my understanding is they have to post a notice that says, if you're interested in Shawshank text, you know, go to this website, here's where to find the information. What we have found is, um, there is one, there is one of our sending communities, that the town offices are now closed on Fridays. Um, there's another one that, depending on which Friday it is, uh, sometimes they're in the office, sometimes they're not in the office, so it does get challenging. Um, and one of the things that was, that was very clear and prominent in the training that we sat through is, it is our responsibility to make sure that those things get posted. Now, how do we do that when we're sending them to five different town clerks' offices? So, um, the first part of this is, you know, I, I'm gonna recommend that the committee vote, uh, to approve us to move forward with this process, and to start, um, to start allowing us to post our own agendas, uh, on our, and use our website as the, the, the gathering place, whatever you want to call it. Um, the second part of it is, which came out of the, one of the trainings that, that Taryn and I had attended, um, one of the suggestions was to, to color code the stuff that's in the packet. So, uh, things that are memos or recommendations, or things that have come out from the chair, the superintendent is one color. Um, supporting documentation that goes along with it is a different color, financial updates would be a third color. So, um, it is our intent to start moving forward with that, um, if not for the December meeting, definitely for the January meeting. Um, Ms. Stoudy has offered to deliver hard copies to school committee members of the packet. Um, I don't know how many people print their own stuff versus not printed versus people prefer. Um, we will operate on the premise that you want it delivered to you on that Friday unless you tell us otherwise. Um, so moving forward, we're, again, we're gonna try to get that stuff out, um, and move towards a system where it is very clear. You know, the, the memo indicates that, you know, this is what we're gonna discuss, here's the background information you need to be aware of. Um, here's, you know, here's the potential vote that we're, we're gonna take. Um, so again, to, to go along with, uh, you know, let's not meet till midnight, and um, and I figured with the title of the other one, I think it was like more effective meetings, or something like that. Um, so we are, we are gonna try to move forward with some of that, so. Um, we don't really need permission for the uh, the packet changes and the delivery piece, but we do definitely need a vote on allowing us to move to using the website to post our agendas.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make a motion that we start the process to move our meeting postings to our website.
No, second one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ron, ask them to put that next one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
About the future tournaments.
Yeah, I, I had a discussion with Tony. Um, for those of you who weren't, weren't aware of it, the uh, girls volleyball team, unfortunately, is not allowed to speak in the vocational tournament. And as I do more research into it, seems like the MIAA is, is taking over this whole process, where they asked us to put in a schedule, um, was it the TBD, no, not date, a date, Stacy, help me out.
It was a TBD.
We put down TBD.
You're supposed to put a placeholder, and it wasn't put in.
And you can put TBD, TBD, okay, correct, correct, correct.
Just for clarification, there's two different tournaments for most sports. There's a state vocational tournament, and there's a MIAA state tournament.
State vocational tournament started in nineteen ninety-six, because over the years, it was felt that, athletic directors felt that that the vocational schools are really not getting a shot to compete at the, so, uh, these tournaments came about. And it's done quite well. So I felt bad, Coach talked to me, and I just wanted that, the committee to be aware of this. Somebody dropped the ball along the way, I'm not naming names, I wasn't happy with this, uh, these poor girls were left holding the bag. And I don't know, Stacy, it wasn't happy. It's not a, it wasn't a happy situation. So going forth, uh, this can't happen again, uh, in the future.
So, what?
I think Jess had mentioned something at the very end.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Um, so we get, just to, just to piggyback off that, um, what we found out is it only, is, it only affects certain sports.
Correct.
So football is exempt from this, this, this structure and this process. Um, boys soccer, girls soccer, field hockey, volleyball. Um, this is something that I, I worked with, uh, superintendents from our sister schools, uh, it didn't just affect us. It is my understanding that there was only one team in the state that was actually allowed to participate in the field hockey tournament. So by default, they became vocational state champions. Um, I know our athletic director, uh, went to the MVADA, the Massachusetts Vocational Athletic Directors Association. That organization has, um, has, has put forth a proposal to ensure that this doesn't happen in the future. They, they're, that, that organization themselves are gonna build some checks and balances into this to make sure that all of their member schools are complying with MIAA's requirements, so that we shouldn't find ourselves in this situation again.
Yeah.
Um, my understanding is this was also the first year that this format changed.
Yes.
So what ended up happening was a lot of schools just did what they've always done. Um, and then they were not notified by MIAA till like a few days or a week before the tournament, saying, hey, guess what, you missed your deadline, sorry, your kids can't compete. So, it was, it was a mess.
Normally that we had the tournament, and they really wouldn't care, but now they wanna.
They wanna control.
Because I think the way Coach would get us explained, we could have played as many as twenty-two contests, and a lot of other schools go, wait a minute, you're only allowed to play twenty, so you play with that number, the, so, um, yeah, the football situation, if, if our football team hadn't done as quite as well as they're doing, they would have been qualified for the vocational playoffs, which is that you're gonna have the, there's Super Bowls next, a week after Thanksgiving. I know Whittier's in the finals. Um, so those schools could play the first round of playoffs or non-playoffs, and I noticed all of them were eligible, opted out. There's three divisions, if you look at the paper, large, medium, and small. So it's a lot of schools, so they'll crown three football champions on the, for vocational, on December third or fourth, whatever it is. But our, our kids are going on to the, to the state championship on the December fifth against Foxborough.
Whatever Friday is, yeah.
So that's it. So thank you, Tony, for following up on that.
Yes.
It's beyond the specific scope, when I, but when I think when this issue was first identified for inclusion on the agenda. Um, I think there's a desire, I'll just speak for myself on this one, um, but maybe other members as well. There's a desire at some point to talk, maybe in a calmer time, with the athletic director, he's very busy these days. Um, about our, the relationship any school has with the MIAA, because there's a common, from my vantage point, there's a common link between what happened with this, these vocational tournaments, and an issue we experienced in the spring on behalf of one of our other girls teams, um, the lacrosse team. And we are not unique to this, this is not unique to Shawshank. Almost on an annual basis, MIAA winds up either in litigation or a major protracted debate with some school, because their tendency is to impose the most draconian um, policies and punishments. It is so anti-student, anti-progressive discipline, anti, um, the sensibilities we would expect of any of our administrators or teachers, in my opinion. And I, on one hand, we don't, that's what any of us can feel, our, our athletic department has to deal with this institution, they have their own perspective. But at some point, I think it would be worth us discussing that, because I think we, all of us that were here in the spring, remember a, a student safety issue. Where this, this same entity that was so quick to take a, a hammer to a group of schools for communication, was not so communicative when you and Jessica and others were trying to communicate on behalf of student safety. So, I think there's, there's a time for that. And um, yep, there's some, as Ron indicated, there's clearly with some, some falling down on, on some issues here and in some other schools. But we wouldn't even have been gotten there if MIAA's philosophical approach was in the twenty-first century. Twenty-second century. Anyways, so just, sometime that might be worth something if, you know, we have a, an athletic program, it's very successful, it's very well thought of. That doesn't matter. And, and again, we can, all you have to do is be a regular reader of the newspaper and see that MIAA gets caught up with the kinds of things that are, quite frankly, embarrassment, embarrassing to its leaders, in my opinion, so. Anyways, thank you.
Alrighty, anybody else? Okay, AI policy. Is that for you to give me?
So, we have an AI policy, it is subject to review every year, like our admissions policy. But as a new policy, we looked at it last month, and just looked at it, and this month, we vote on it. If there had been any concerns about it, they were not spoken to me. I don't know if you guys got any emails with concerns about it. So I think at this point, I will respectfully request a vote to vote in our new AI policy for the rest of the school year.
Second motion?
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm not sure, what is the executive minutes release? Did we already vote for?
That was voted at the last committee meeting, but if you read the open meeting laws, on the next agenda, you have to acknowledge which ones have been, been voted for release.
All right. All right, so, I'll acknowledge, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, September twenty-fourth, two thousand two-four are the executive session minutes that were released at our last meeting. Future agenda.
Oh, hi, sorry, I just wanted to excuse myself.
Oh, all right.
I don't want to interrupt, I just want to say goodnight to everyone.
Bye.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Do we want to, make Coach Costerville for December?
You wanna do it now, or, well, oh, okay.
Is that a future agenda item?
Correct. Fall sports update, and we, and I, and to, maybe to address Brian's concerns. I just throw that. Anything else, anybody who remembers who was supposed to do it?
Can we have a discussion about like, potentially, like, coming into the twenty-first century, about like, other schools have like an HR director? Like, talk about budgeting, about that, looking at what other schools do, like Minuteman, the showbook, K through twelves. And I can tell you, at least in Burlington, they had a town meeting vote, basically different examples, but basically you have like a K through twelve school that's reliant. But I, I forgot who I could read it, but they, at that point, historically, they relied on the town, but they had proposed basically breaking out a separate director. And basically, it seems like those are, I mean, I've worked, private, public, other, in every, every place, you have two hundred employees. I think it's like, it's stress off you, the business office, I think it's time to bring somebody in, not just a director, but like somebody that's like a, a staff, like has that plus like the staff. So I think it's time to, I understand it's additional cost, I get it, and it's, I think it's something we need to look at. So I, I would appreciate for, I don't know if it has to be for the next meeting, but it would be good to know, like, what other schools are doing from like a director level. Um, I think that probably like, having like, not just a director, but like having a staff, because that's like a lot of stuff to expect people to do, like short-term liability, long-term liability, payroll updates, uh, FMLA, like all this stuff, who to reach out to, so it doesn't have to go through the business office. I mean, there's gonna be some involvement from you as superintendent, and you know, from the business office, but I think it's high time we get somebody in here that has that level, and it can't just be somebody that's like, not to diminish the position, but I know in the past, there's been like somebody doing HR functions, but somebody that has director level and potentially like support staff.
You want to go from clerical to executive kind of role?
Yes, and if that requires a new administrator position, then something we need to look at, and also not just having a director, maybe you start with that. And then potentially having like staff to back that up.
Because I thought, can we have, wasn't there something?
We have a human resources coordinator, but again, it's, it's more of a clerical role.
It's a clerical role, okay.
That's like if somebody calls about benefits, Ron, it's not like something that can step in and basically, if there's FMLA or something brought up, that person could be used as a sounding board, or as an intermediary to kind of resolve some of this stuff. So, I think that, I would appreciate by the next meeting or in one to put it on above. Like maybe not for December, but maybe we can for January, look at what other schools are doing. Maybe expanding of staff is too advanced. And maybe we look at what other schools are doing from a director position for that. Because I think that's part of the issues we run into historically, present company or other things. I'm just saying, I think it's time to.
I agree. And if it's something that we're going to consider for the next budget, we do need to have that conversation, so.
Let me see what I can.
You can take some of the state money, Troy.
We have a, we have a short, we have a short turnaround till the December meeting, but let me see what I can pull together. If it has to be.
January.
You want to do it in Jan, you want to push it till January? The only, the only problem with the January law is that's the end of January. And by then, we're going to be pretty deep into budget. So if this is something that we're, the committee's potentially looking at for that point 27, I think that conversation has to happen. Well, I mean, I guess it could happen in budget. Maybe it starts in budget from there. Okay.
But you have to start with like a director, that's like something to look at and then and then look at that one.
See what kind of information you can get by December. And if, you know, you have to reach out to people and they have to get back to you. And if they're, you know, too busy to talk to you or they say, hey, look, can we have this conversation in January? You'll come back to us and say, I reached out to, you know, these, I reached out to five towns and this is the response I got.
Yeah, it's December 16th.
Yeah, it's early, so.
It's early.
Well, I have to try.
Because you're, okay, because right now we have a person who handles all the paperwork for HR.
Doesn't doesn't.
So you're looking for someone to be like a director that would, a new position to come in and and tell us what, what do we exactly here?
Run, you got 200 employees.
I understand, it's never been done yet.
If you go out on F, like somebody that has industry experience that comes in. I mean, you'd need that backstop to be able to, like litigation, all that stuff. There's a whole umbrella. I think that basically it's high time to come into the 21st century to basically to have that director position and to look at. Because I think it's a huge deficiency. I mean, I might be in the minority here, but I mean, I could, if I if I basically at my job and I've worked in a hospital network, I've worked public, private companies, you can go online and you can say, I can contact that person for benefits. I can contact that person for FMLA. And I think you start at a director level and then, but I think it's a big enough thing. Like we put enough money into like other administrator positions. This is a huge deficiency. I mean, I brought it up multiple times. I think it's, I maybe I'm in the minority, but I mean, maybe I'm pissy tonight. I don't know. I think it's, I think it's high time to.
Is that unusual?
No, no, it's just.
I thought I was on your fan club. For carbon.
You are.
Alright.
That's a direction.
But I think I think for a director, we look at and then then expand it.
Let me find out what I can.
Yes.
I mean, I know, I know in a show that has a model similar to that, so that's one, that's where I'll start.
Yeah. Maybe that's right. Okay, I'm with you.
But last thing I'll say, it goes beyond just paperwork.
Oh, I understand.
It has somebody involved.
There are issues that come up that need to be addressed with respect for sensitivity and confidentiality and things that our current organizational chart may not really cover.
The interior world is definitely an inch.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a different.
Any, any other thing? People can think of. Alright, so we have executive session. Here, M G L C 30A, section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If my reading is holding. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declared in order to provide the committee with an update on the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination.
I'd like to make a motion to pause these actions so we can conduct our own investigation. I need a second.
I I think you probably be helpful here, a little more explanation.
So I I, as you know, I I did email all of you.
Yeah.
I have a strong opinion about what happened last week. Jenna was given notice. Business manager was given notice.
Okay, maybe if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
If if you can sort of identify the purposes generically as possible.
Okay, so.
For what what you wanting to to investigate and why we couldn't, why both are not doable.
Okay, so TMS is the company that we hired as the consultant. Tony's had them as the interim business manager.
It's actually the committee hired them. It wasn't me.
Okay. Either way, TM Solutions produced a report. You know, this isn't the forensics that I was hoping for as a school committee member. I know the responsibility or the authority lies with Tony for the hiring and firing, but he also looked, you looked me in the eyes multiple times and you told me Jenna would have an opportunity to come in and discuss this.
She does, but not, that is beyond the scope of the school committee's authority.
Say that, right?
No, no, you can say that, but that is not, that does, that authority does not lie with the school committee. The school committee does not hide, does not hold hearings for employees that have been dismissed. That falls solely with the superintendent's office. There's also mediation, there's also arbitration, there's also an appeal to the commissioner's office. Those rights exist for every single employee. We can't make special rules for certain positions and certain people. That's where you get yourself in trouble.
But just to clarify, Tony, the Reform Act, basically, you know, I was going to say, the Reform Act, basically, this is why I struggle with this law. Because basically, 1993, the school committee before that, used to be involved in every hiring. All personnel. But the 1993, talking about coming into the 21st century, there's certain positions like business manager, certain assistant superintendents, special ed directors that basically, and I'm not going to go through the whole history, but when we did that process, we did it slightly different than what Desi recommends, the superintendent does the review, presents it to the committee for approval. We did that, whatever, do your own research. It was done differently, but that's normally the process. But that's why I struggle with that law, because basically, it's either you basically, it's either the superintendent is overseeing everything and that's basically the school committee oversees that. Or, but these are other positions that basically you're involved with on the way in, but on the way out, it's grayer. And that's what I struggle with as far as like, that's that's the issue.
So this this TMS thing that came out, number two, C8, confuses me a little. This is the treasure position.
Again, that's something that should be discussed in executive.
I wonder where you go into this and then, I don't know, maybe if you still feel the same way.
Well, I just, I wanted for the record, say that, you know, I I'd like to pause, I made a motion. I want to pause these, you know, going into executive session so that, you know, I can get my questions answered and maybe other committee members can. And then, you know, you know, I said, conduct our own investigation, but you can call it whatever you want. You know, I, that's just how I feel about it. I also feel that, you know, this report, which was shared with us last Monday, you know, it doesn't, I I'm I'm really curious about like also like the, what do we do to fix this? Like, what's the best practice? What, you know, what we currently do, was it just inherited from legacy systems? That, you know, it doesn't necessarily, one person coming into that role, it's not something that you can fix overnight. I'm not arguing the fact about the job performance right now. I just am talking about what was put in this report. And I'm not comfortable, you know. I I just want, I want to do more research, so that's why I made the motion.
I I will second the motion, not necessarily because I support it, but because I think it should be decided by us as a group. And and I also believe that some of the very issues you discussed will be part of the discussion of the executive session item. But you made, you know, the motion, I second it and.
Not not to pile on here, but I will. That's what the discussion was about the internal audit, was basically that's what the decision was made. So that's what the expectation, we're talking about timelines. That's why, not the point, but that's why I was expecting that to be earlier. So that's part of, so to her point, that was one of the things, I've talked to many members, that was one of the things that was important. And I mean, I mean.
As you say, we we have our attorney here. I mean, you've got enough of an idea of what she's trying to do, I think. I don't, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on it.
My only thoughts is the reason I'm here is to discuss pending litigation which has been filed. I don't know about this other document that you're referring to, but it's not part of my discussion. My discussion relates to litigation that is pending against the district. And that's why the matter is on the agenda. It's not, whatever else you do doesn't alter the fact that there is litigation against the district that needs to be discussed.
And I, I'm going to open a can of worms here and Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the committee is outside of its scope of authority to launch its own investigation and do something parallel to that. That lies under under statute, under law, under school district policy, under an employment agreement. That lies with my office. Is that correct?
Well, I I don't even know what the investigation will be, so I I really can't comment on it. So I I'm here to discuss the litigation that's pending. And my recommendation is that we go into executive session to discuss that litigation.
Sorry, did you want to say something?
No, no, I I I agree that it sits with you when you read the law.
Alright. All those in favor of this motion?
Oh, I, I was going to say, sorry. Sorry.
All those opposed?
Let's sustain.
Sustain, okay. So it is eight, one, and one. One, eight. You ever say it, Joe?
Seven. Seven, one, two.
Seven, one, two.
I think I just heard three abstentions.
Wouldn't it be one, seven, two?
Yeah, that's what I said, one, seven.
Can you, can you take it again because it's it's not clear? I'll give the vote.
Alright, all those in favor?
Responing. What? Responing the executive session.
Alright. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
The one, seven, two.
Okay, alright, now we have to vote. Oh, can I get a motion?
Motion, we enter executive session as described.
Ms. Huberty?
Yes.
Tony O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchins?
Yes.
Mr. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
If I say no, what do I?
You can say no. The chip votes aye. Nine, one, we're in executive session as of 8:44. And we will be coming out, I'm sorry, we'll be coming back out to adjourn.
Well, have a wonderful Thanksgiving. All have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Sorry.
It's on the other.
Charlie, what did we do, audit committee?
We're...
I just thought...
So, he's away and I'm away was originally put up.
Nice, alright.
Oh yeah.
So, we have to look up and decide on a new date. Let's...
We go to adjourned first.
We get a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, is this back on?
Oh, wait a second.
Oh, where am I going?
Mr. Gallagher, are we good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
I make a motion for adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving everybody.
No, no, it's good. I was just like, I'm like, what am I supposed to...
I usually put it on the...
It's no problem. I just want to make sure I didn't screw something up.
I made a...
Stop all of your verse.
What? The problem is the audit committee stuff.
And then there's...
It wound up with spin on the picture.
It was on the night, whatever day. It was on, it was on for the ninth, I think, yes.
Whatever day.
You talk, it was good for you guys and I'll be better.
Because he, he's gonna be away. I'm actually gonna be away, calling myself. But, uh...
Just come off the... Just a dict fee.
Or, or...
We're not making a map.